Taught by my grandparents. Traditional way of bringing and welcoming the child in. And I think that as much as we can, I like to for us all to stick to those ways. So if we can have Hannah in the middle of this of your circle. If we can have her in the middle. And then if I can have all the women around Hannah and her baby. That can make it up here, I'm sorry. You may have to pull the circle out a little bit more. Yeah. And then, once you get done with the women's circle. If we can have all our warriors. Outside the women's circle around the baby. Yeah. If the men can come in the circle, you're part of our our nation. Can you pull the tables out a little bit more and the men can go around the women? As protectors. Man, I love your warriors. I know. Will you all fit? Please move the tables back if you don't, if you can't fit. The idea is a circle of protection for this little child. And forgive me for those that may practice. Their welcome of their baby and their community or their nation. They may do a different method, but this is the way I was taught. So today, I just want to say thank you for. All the council that have been great leaders for us. And I pray and I hope that their mind will always be on on this child and other children that are born in their communities. I just hope that um. I would like Ed Ironclad to say some words. As this is one of his relatives as well. I'm sorry. Is he here? Okay, okay. Thank you, I just couldn't see you.
Good afternoon, my name is Ed Ironcloud, this is my. Here Hannah, I'm a Takosha. Here Vember here, she asked me to say a few words, so I'd like to just. Say a few words here and then also I want to say a short prayer for Sakosha here. I really feel good and happy to be here today. You know, to be alive and to be amongst you all and really happy that you're. That we're doing this for our newest Takosha member of this tribe. That we can continue on to do things like this. In our own families and as a tribe to. Ensure that our young ones will be becoming old people. That's what you know, that's what we we hope and strive for, that. Our younger ones will grow to be. Become old and help the people and then. Leave this world naturally as they have come. And really good to see everybody here. To support Takosha here and um. His name is Vember Rocky, he has not received Lakota name yet. But he will soon and I understand that. He was named after my brother-in-law Vember, so I said. I like to tease tease my brother-in-law there, but. So I was want to say a prayer here real quick here and then for that, I hope he'll ask him to say a few words here.
And before you play do the honoring song. Um, I would like to present these gifts from Medicine Root District, Sonia and. Jackie, if you can grab one and the Ella and another female, grab the next one. One to Vember and one to Hannah. The council people for helping. Um, if there anything else, Ed? No, if not, then we can do the song. Can we get the drum group to do a welcome song and honoring? Um, one more gift I have, if you can, Lydia, grab this and give this to the infant, you and Ella. Thank you so much for everybody for assisting me and helping me.
Thank you.
Well, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ella. That was good. I think that's. I give the floor back to Howard, Austin and Ryan.
Are we ready, check?
Yes, you can continue.
So the next one is. Resolution of Medicine Root District requesting that all road graders on a reservation be returned to Medicine Root. No, I just said that. Uh, whereas, no, it's resolution of the Medicine Root District requesting the return. Of its or our road grader. Whereas, under Article Six of the Galsu Tribe's Constitution and Bylaws, the Medicine Root District. Is one of the recognized districts that may consult with representatives of the Interior Department on all matters of local interest. Make recommendations to the Tribal Council Superintendent or Commissioner of Tribal Affairs. Whereas, in the past, the Medicine Root District Road Grader was brought to Pine Ridge and whereas the people of the Medicine Root Districts. Heavily rely on the quality of their roads, therefore, the Medicine Root District requests the return of its road grader. And just a little update on that. Couple of years ago, they wanted all vehicles to be inventoried. Taken back to Pine Ridge, so our road grader was taken up there, they uh. Inventoried it and we never got it back, so that's what this is, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Watkins. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Don Regospar?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Garfield Little Dog? John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Eighteen unanimous motion carried.
Thank you, um. This one's probably gonna cause a. Resolution of the Medicine Root District requesting the reimbursement of. One thousand dollars that they used to cover the propane bills. For the Medicine Root District Service Center, a tribally owned facility. Whereas, under Article Six of the Galsu Tribe's Constitution and Bylaws, the Medicine Root District. Is one of the recognized districts that may consult with representatives of the Interior Department on all matters of local interests, make recommendations to the Tribal Council. Superintendent or Commissioner of Tribal Affairs. Whereas, during December of twenty twenty-three and January twenty twenty-four, the temperatures dropped to extreme. Lowes and the propane at the service center ran out of. Should say the propane tank at the service center ran out of propane unexpectedly and whereas the Medicine Root District paid to have the propane tanks filled. And whereas, the cap office is a tribal building and the responsibility of covering the cost of its maintenance. And operations lie with the tribe. And therefore, the Medicine Root District is requesting the reimbursement, one thousand they use, one thousand dollars they use to cover. The propane bills for the Medicine Root District Service Center. Motion.
Okay, we got motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Watkins. Call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Don Regospar?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Uh. Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Garfield Little Dog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Seventeen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, um. Resolution requesting the lawsuit Tribal Parks and Recreation Authority and Veterans Affairs to aid. With planning and financing a memorial park in honor of fallen warriors and veterans from the Medicine Root District. Whereas, under Article Six of the Galsu Tribe's Constitution and Bylaws, the Medicine Root District is one of the recognized. Districts that may consult with representatives of the Interior Department on all matters of local interest. Make recommendations to the Tribal Council Superintendent or Commissioner of Tribal Affairs. Whereas, the Medicine Root District recognizes the sacrifice and the valor of its fallen warriors and veterans. Who have served our nation with honor and whereas it is essential to pay tribute to their brave. Individuals individuals from the Medicine Root District who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to our country. And to honor all veterans for their dedication and service. And whereas, the lawsuit Tribal Parks and Recreation Authority and Veterans Affairs play vital roles. In preserving and commemorating the history and contributions of our warriors and veterans. Therefore, the Medicine Root District requests the lawsuit Tribal Parks and Recreation Authority and Veterans Affairs to aid. With planning and financing memorial park in honor of fallen warriors and veterans from the Medicine Root District. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle? Second by Councilman Watkins? Call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Not voting.
James Cross?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? David Poyer?
Yes.
Don Regospar?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Garfield Little Dog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
No.
Fifteen yes, one oh two not voting, motion carried.
Okay, um. The twentieth and final one. Resolution establishing a standing order for emergency south, emergency shelter services during extreme weather. Conditions by Galsu Tribe for the Medicine Root District Service Center. And potentially all other district service centers, whereas, under Article Six of the Galsu Tribe's Constitution and Bylaws. The Medicine Root District is one of the recognized districts that may consult with representatives of the Interior Department on all matters. Or local interests, make recommendations to the Tribal Council Superintendent or Commissioner of Tribal Affairs. Whereas, the Medicine Root District recognizes the critical need for providing emergency shelter services. To community members during periods of extreme weather conditions and whereas the well-being. And safety of our residents is of utmost importance, particularly particularly. During adverse weather events. And whereas, there is a shared responsibility to ensure that all members of the community have access to a safe. And secure shelter during winter weather events. And the service center should serve as emergency shelters. Therefore, the Medicine Root District requests the establishing. Of a standing order for emergence, emergency shelter services during extreme weather conditions. By the Galsu Tribe for the Medicine Root District Service Center. And potentially all other district service centers. Motion.
I got motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second, second by Councilman Watkins. Question, okay?
Ryan, can you clarify? What that means?
I'll go over to Juanita.
Okay, is it talking about the district service? Constructing in a whole new one, I don't know, I'm kind of confused.
I was hoping to have the um Crazy Horse Planning Commission people here too. Um, it was addressed in my district because during um the storm that we just had, that was freezing with temperatures. Um, and I want to thank Mr. Stark comes out for. Uh, playing a heavy part in that because um. He actually got us all communicating to make sure that people were being taken care of. But I want to say that, you know, um, it's really hard being in an executive board because we don't have control of the staff. And I know that my district in particular, people were able to stay home or um, they weren't. Really readily available whenever somebody would be pounding at that door. And you know, when nobody's at that door, you know, like Cheyenne River, they had a male that um. Foes to death right at their door, you know, of a shelter. And since um, the majority of the districts. Have cap offices that are for the people. Um, I I wanted to see and I addressed it at the planning committee meeting that. We should all be available for those people that are homeless and need help. Or assistance because they have nowhere to go. And you know, I I told everybody, I don't want nobody freezing to death on my watch, being a chair. So I addressed it to the committee that um. The commission that we should. In all of our district have a standing order because I was told. At our last um meeting. That they had to look for Hobart to um, get him to open um. The have, make sure that the cap offices are open. And he put a statement out there, but there still was some cap offices that weren't available for those people that didn't have a place to go. And I already know that people drink or whatever it is, but. There should be no harm in the district manager going and being there for. You know, to monitor their facility because. You know, they get hours that can be paid or compensated later or they can get um. Compensation by, you know, moving, having a couple of days off if they had to be there. So it was really hard for all of us, you know, as all of the districts to. Really address that issue and then um, you know, it's up to you guys. These are your people, these are your um, staff that um. You know, don't want to be available or whatever goes on in all the other districts, I guess I'm happy that we don't have. Majority of that going on, but I think a standing order. Would just help every district to understand that we're not, we're not um. You know, we're we're full of luxury because we can, we have a home, we have heat. But there's so many people that don't have no heat and they have to defend themselves or try to even survive even. During that freezing temperature and and I told the commission that, you know, I wanted to include all the districts because. You know, if if our district's full, then why can't we go to Allen, you know, and Allen help us, I mean, we're. We're all relatives, we're all family, they shouldn't. We have so much policy and red tape that we don't help each other anymore and then we teach our kids not to help. I don't think that should be right, I just think that. You know, I took it to my district and everybody was, you know, approval of it. I took it to um. The commissioners. And they're all in support of it and um, and I know they didn't have their meetings to, you know, to take it to their districts, but. I feel it's necessary now because. Uh, who knows tomorrow, we might have that freezing weather and then what are we gonna do? And um, I'm frustrated because I I want to help, but there's times when I can't go, I don't have a key to our cap office and I can't go over there and just open it up for our community. So I just want to say um. You know, if you can recognize this for all of your communities, I think that would really solve probably a hundred percent of. Those people that are homeless. As well as others, elderly, whoever needs it, um, we had an elderly that ran out of propane and. I was thankful Ryan got a chance to help there because I think that um, she wouldn't have had a place to go, but. You know, we all worked it out together, um, and I was thankful for our council representatives for just letting us know, you know, when. You know, when they're calling them because sometimes they can't get a hold of us and. And then the council people know how to get a hold of us, so just working together and making it a big effort to save lives. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carlo?
Thank you, Chairman, good afternoon, everyone. You know, um. I I think it needs to be written in there. That it's mandatory that the service center managers. Are there on site whenever our cap offices are open. For these type of situations. You know, we had um, our cap office in Pine Ridge ramsacked and. And um, I I'm not going to go into detail in regards to everything that happened to our cap office. But um. You know, I I think people need to show respect as well when they're um, being housed. Because that that there was little to none shown for our cap office. And I and I I support this because I feel that Pine Ridge has been um, taking the brunt. Of the homelessness. Um, I get calls practically daily. Um, I just got chewed out this morning about. Um, people coming up to their cars. Again, and asking for money, not only asking for money, but asking if they have drugs. So I'm not going to go into all of that, but um, I support this. If that language is in there, you know, that the service managers are are on site while these. Um, sites are open, thank you.
Is that okay, Juanita, do we include that? Okay. Uh, motion to approve with that language added, Chair.
Okay, uh, just wanted to comment off that, if I may, um. You know, in that situation, when we had that cold spell here, um, and and Juanita is right, we uh. Uh, we were told that service centers were open, but come to find out only a few were. So we called the uh, Dean. To verify that. Uh, one one thing that uh. Uh, and I told Dean, I said, once from what I'm told, emergency management, once he calls me and and declares that it's a. An emergency, those, that has to happen automatically. Um, so I, and that's what I told Dean, um, you need to open those um, service centers, uh, so. Just want to throw that, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the other part that falls into this is. You know, we had ours open and. Had to be extensively cleaned afterwards. But um. You know, we ask our staffs to go and we open, open these up. But then our staff gets told, they don't, they can't collect overtime for it. And so how do we expect somebody to go and open these centers up and be there when? They're not allowed to collect overtime and punch in and be there for the hours that they're there. And I'm sure that goes for all of the service centers that across reservation that have staff there that are sitting there. And um, so. You know, on on that part, we need to figure out how how we take care of that. To making sure that, you know, people who do sit. To making sure that, you know, people who do sit there, the staff that do go in and, and open those up at this time, you know, get fair compensation for that, you know, so just putting that out there as well.
Uh, yes, uh, and that's why we had to go through emergency manager to, to, to confirm that it is emergency. So we have documentation in case it results to that, uh, financial situation. Uh, Councilwoman Helferson.
You know, the service centers are put there to help our people out and they need to be open during these emergency situations. And I find like our cap office, we struggle to get our cap office open during emergencies and we're not allowed a key even as, um, executive board. And so we have to designate other areas in our districts for emergency services. So I would, um, ask that they consider putting some kind of language in there to include, um, communication with our executive boards because our executive boards are the ones who do the routine matters in our districts. And, uh, for them not to have a key to a service center, at least the basement area. Um, there's nothing in the basement areas of our cap offices. There's, um, you know, a kitchen, there's a restroom, restrooms. So I think, you know, it would be very appreciated if our cap office service center staff worked with our executive board during these emergency situations.
Councilwoman Little Dog.
Thank you, Chair. You know, these, uh, these buildings are tribal buildings, they're not district buildings. And there's a distinction between both governments. And who, who's going to be liable should something happen when one of these buildings are open? It's not going to be the district, it's going to be the tribe. So we got to remember that because those buildings do belong to the tribe. Um, and unlike the other ones, you know, we get, uh, people that are intoxicated that come into these buildings a lot. And they don't take care of the building, I'll put it that way. And we, we don't have people that are supervising them. So if we're not going to pay our tribal, um, employees overtime to sit there and, and monitor, then who's going to be responsible? Because these ain't district buildings, these, all these buildings are in the name of the tribe. But if we're going to open these buildings, then I think we need to allow our tribal employees to get some type of compensation to monitor. Because we're going to be the ones held, um, responsible should something happen. Because we can't foresee everything, accidents happen, incidents happen, especially when alcohol and drugs are involved. And let's be honest, a lot of these people that come to shelter are intoxicated. We, we go through that every day here in our district. So I, I would like to see something in this resolution that would allow our employees to get compensated overtime if they're going to monitor them because like I said, we're responsible for these buildings. These are tribal buildings, they're not district buildings. Um, and I don't know if you'll include that, Mr. Jumping Eagle, but that'd be my request.
Go ahead, Councilman London.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I just want to recognize our Porcupine District Service Center um, and the, the workers out there, you know, during this last cold front that come out, you know, we was able to, I Dave and the executive board and some of the staff was able to sit down and you know, figure out a plan and work with one of the schools there. So I just want to acknowledge them for, for having that available and their hard work. Because out in the district, I mean, they, they do, um, all we can to, to put the, the people first, I guess. But, um, uh, if, if Chair, if I have to make that motion to refer the overtime, uh, issue to refer it back to finance, so we could figure out a way where these employees can get overtime for these emergency situations. So I'll make that motion to refer it to finance to figure out a way to get these employees overtime during these emergency situations. That's my, my motion, Chair.
I think we have a motion on the floor, we need to run. Okay, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one last comment to counsel is, you know, during these emergency situations, whether our people are uh, intoxicated or if they're drug induced or anything, their safety and their lives always matter first. And if it wasn't for our people, we wouldn't have the financial, um, financials available to even have service centers or to have buildings or anything in this tribe ran without their enrollment numbers. So I encourage you guys to keep that in mind and have compassion for our people, whether, you know, what they go through. Because when you're in negative degree weather and you have nowhere to go, you know, our service centers should be open for them to be in a safe location for their life. Thank you.
Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Frank, can I have the floor?
Yes.
Sorry, um, I just want to say that, you know, um, we have a lot of alcoholics, addicts, people that are addicted to alcohol and drugs in every community. That does not mean that they're not human. And that does not mean that we shouldn't look out for them. And they still have a vote, you know, so my thought, and then, um, I'm diabetic, so I consider, um, alcohol a disease. And I would not throw out my brother or have somebody throw out my brother if they were diabetic, you know, and needing help. And so I look at them the same way. They are also sick and they also need help. And there's going to be time, they don't want, uh, help throughout the whole year maybe, but there's going to be times when they do need help. So I'm just saying that, um, the way we looked at it too is, you know, people can get compensated by comp time. Comp time is everybody's, um, um, as a tribal employee, you can take comp time so that you can have that time off. And if you gained forty hours of comp time for the whole week that it was cold, then it's forty hours vacation from your job. Not only comp time, but I am in favor of overtime because these people do work hard at the cap offices. And they also have a livelihood and they also have to be away from their families. The other thing is, um, you know, the, um, when people come intoxicated, our, our jan- the way we have in Medicineood, our janitors can be there because they're male. They can supervise, they can do whatever. But when somebody comes intoxicated, that does not mean that you don't, you can't call, um, public safety so that they can have a warm room throughout the night, until morning or the next day, whenever they can get out. But the fact is, we all have a plan. But this is our major plan that every district should have to fall back on should something fail. If the schools won't keep them, if nobody else will keep them, family or whatever, we need to protect them. We need to protect these people that are members of our districts because nobody else is going to do it but you guys. And so that's why I'm coming to you guys. If I could, if I could have had a key that day and had a way to stay up there to make sure I monitored my cap office, I would have done it. But I don't see that happening for every district. I just want everybody to be protected. What's wrong with that? Don't you believe in your people to be safe? I, that's the bottom line of this resolution. Thank you.
Councilwoman Little Dog, there we got to move on.
All right, yeah. You know, I, I find it funny that every time I speak, I, someone has to rebuttal or make a comment about, but I didn't say those people's lives didn't matter. I just said we need supervision over those individuals because things happen when people are intoxicated. I didn't belittle these individuals because I have family members that are on alcohol and drugs. So let's get that straight. Every time I talk, someone has to respond or rebuttal with something and make it sound like I'm, I'm heartless. It's not the case here. I'm looking out for our buildings. That's the point I was making.
Okay, let's run the vote here. Well, we're getting out of, off the subject here, so. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Senior. Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donary Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hog Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Totally forgot what we're voting on, but yes. Okay, we got eighteen unanimous, motion carried. Councilwoman London, uh, you had a motion?
Stacy, did you get that motion? Okay, so my motion is to refer this overtime issue to finance and for the finance committee to find out a way how to get these employees overtime during emergency situations. Thank you.
Okay, so we have motion by Councilman Lunderman, second by Councilman Little Dog. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yep.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Donary Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hog Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes, we're moving. Eighteen unanimous, motion carried.
Okay, Chair, the last one. Resolution of the Medicineood District requesting a crosswalk, a sidewalk, and road signs from Little Angels to the Medicineood District Service Center. Whereas under Article Six of the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Constitution and bylaws, the Medicineood District is one of the recognized districts that may consult with representatives of the Interior Department in all matters of local interest, make recommendations to the tribal council, superintendent, or commissioner of tribal affairs. Whereas the Medicineood District Service Center moved to the outskirts of the community is not accessible by foot at the current moment. And whereas there is no accessible path between the community and the service center and people are forced to walk on the highway. And whereas elderly and people, whereas elderly and people who have disabilities and have no form of transportation need to be able to get to the district service center in a safe manner without having to utilize the road as a sidewalk. And therefore, the Medicineood District requests a crosswalk, a sidewalk and road signs from Little, from Little Angels to the Medicineood District Service Center. Motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Watkins. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yep.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donary Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hog Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes. Fifteen yes, three not voting, motion carried.
Okay, last one. No, I just said that. Thank you, Council, thank you, Chairman.
EMBD. Oh, oh, yeah, there was another district out there.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think our, um, minutes are attached with the original uh, documentation that was given to Stacy, the secretary. But I'll read the first resolution for the Waukabomni District. Resolution of the Waukabomni District Executive Board of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Waukabomni District approving the Waukabomni District Executive Board filling the vacancy of the Waukabomni District Secretary certifying filling of the vacancy and forwarding the resolution to the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Whereas the Waukabomni District established by the Constitution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe is recognized as governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe under Article Six. Whereas the Waukabomni District Executive Board met in a regular meeting on the twenty-eighth day of December, two thousand twenty-three and with a quorum present voted to fill the vacancy of the secretary. Whereas the candidate selected to fill the vacancy completed the requirements per the OST Election Code. Whereas the Waukabomni District Executive Board filled the vacancy of the Waukabomni District Secretary with George Tulance to complete the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four term. Whereas the Waukabomni District Council met in a special meeting on January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four and voted to approve the Waukabomni District Executive Board selection of George Tulance to fill the vacancy of the secretary to complete the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four term. Be it further resolved that the Waukabomni District Council certifies George Tulance as secretary for the remaining two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four term. With that, I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Sears, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yep.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donary Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hog Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Sixteen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, Council. I'll read the second resolution coming from the Waukabomni District. It's resolution of the Waukabomni District of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Waukabomni District Council requesting a resolution from the Oglala Sioux Tribe to direct the appropriate authorities of Highway eighteen to lower speed limit in the Waukabomni District from Cedar Faces on Mission Flat North to Payabia to fifty-five miles per hour to improve signage at the bus stops therein at flashing lights at the crosswalks therein and signage to indicate and warn of blind spots therein in order to improve the safety of pedestrians, schoolchildren, and motor vehicle operators. Whereas the Waukabomni District established by the Constitution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe is recognized as a governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe under Article of Six of the OST Constitution. Whereas the Calico Community Members attended a district meeting and voiced their concerns for safety in the route described. Whereas there is some evidence that there is a higher number of fatalities on the roads due to motor vehicles hitting pedestrians. Whereas the area is described has many school stops, a crosswalk, blind spots, and curves. Therefore, be it resolved, the Waukabomni District requests a resolution from the Oglala Sioux Tribe to direct the appropriate authorities of Highway eighteen to lower speed limit in the Waukabomni District from Cedar Faces on Mission Flat North to Payabia to fifty-five miles per hour to improve signage at the bus stops therein, flashing lights at the crosswalks therein and signage to indicate and warn of blind spots therein in order to improve the safety of pedestrians, schoolchildren, and motor vehicle operator, operators. Whereas the Waukabomni District Council met in a special meeting on the twenty-ninth day of January, two thousand twenty-four and with a quorum present adopted the resolution. Be it further resolved, the Waukabomni District Council does hereby adopt this resolution. With that, I so move. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, second by Councilwoman Sears. Can we have a question? Go ahead, Councilman Dillon. I've been waiting all day to give a campaign speech. No, what would be nice is if they put a forty-five mile an hour speed limit through No, what would be nice is if they put a forty-five mile an hour speed limit through, uh, Red Cloud School that turned there with lights and crosswalks there. Because to me, that's a very dangerous place. People drive ninety miles an hour through there, so can you include that on your recommendation?
Yeah, we can amend, uh, I don't know, um, I know this came from our district uh, council, the, they did have a meeting, but I'm sure, uh, maybe they can work on, uh, we can bring back, we can bring back something to amend that. But I also, uh, would like to say that, uh, within our district, we have the eastbound uh, coming from Pine Ridge into Waukabomni District. Man, you guys really like to speed. And then when I'm turning into my, uh, approach there, just, uh, east of the Waukabomni cap, boy, I have about three or four cars behind me, and they expect me to turn into my approach real quick so they could head out towards east, so we really need that speed limit kind of lowered, but I'll bring that up to the district. I know that our, uh, some of our district members in that Wolf Creek community also had concerns, so we could take that back, Craig, and, uh, maybe we can, uh, get them to pass something and we can bring it back. But, yeah.
So, you... Okay, so you still want to run your motion, okay. Yes, go ahead, Council.
You know, Sonia, you might want to bring back, because it's sixty-five when you leave by the old hospital and then when you get to Cedar Faces, then you're gonna cut it down by ten? Yeah, because it says, it says Cedar Faces to Payabia, so you've got a section in the middle that's sixty-five. I mean, I think they need to take it back and redo the resolution myself.
I think what they're saying is from Cedar Faces at, uh, Mission Flat, going past Red Cloud School and, uh, north to, uh, what you're saying is sixty-five.
No, 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 from Cedar Faces back into Pine Ridge is sixty-five.
It is.
Yeah, the, the other way is sixty-five, but you're lowering it to fifty-five. They should include from Pine Ridge to wherever that destination.
Well, I think our district just did it this, you know, this came from the district, so we, we'll take it back and we could discuss that with him. I'm sure they're listening, because they've been texting, so they're listening.
Did you just, uh, re- withdraw your motion? Okay, you're... Go ahead, Council.
Um, thank you Chair. Um, you know, Sonia and Jackie, maybe we could just make that amendment, or from Pine Ridge all the way through? Do you think, do you think we could do that?
You know, in, in, in the history of, you know, working with our districts, we can't change what our district wants. You know, because we don't want to go against what they pass, so if, if that happens, then I think our district would bring something forward. Yeah.
All right, well, let's just run it.
Okay, we're running motion. As is.
As is.
With, with the amendments, with the forty-five mile per hour? No, just okay. All right, as is, all right. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Garfield Still.
Yep.
John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Unanimous, eighteen, motion carried.
I'll read the next one, Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Three or four. Resolution of the Waukabomni District Council requesting a resolution from the Ogallawasoo Tribe to direct and appropriate the authorities to assist the Waukabomni District in approving Road BI thirty-two beginning at the Wade Vitalis Fields west towards Slim Buttes for safety. Whereas the Waukabomni District established by the Constitution of the Ogallawasoo Tribe is recognized as a governing body of the Ogallawasoo Tribe by Article Six of the OST Constitution. Whereas BI thirty-two beginning at Wade's Vitalis Field is very narrow, and a young life was lost there. Whereas BI thirty-two to Slim Buttes Community is damaged with dips, bumps, and speeds which is affecting the community to work. Whereas BI thirty-two is in need of alternative transportation in the form of walking, riding, biking, running path. Whereas BI thirty-two is in need, uh, need of signage at the bus stops, wearing flashlights at the crosswalks, wearing as a signage to indicate for the, the warn of blind spots, wearing the order to improve the safety for pedestrians, schools, children, and the general public and motor vehicle operators. Whereas the Red Cloud Community members attended a district meeting and voiced their concerns for safety in the route described. Whereas it's some evidence that there is a number of fatalities on the roads due to motor vehicles hitting pedestrians. Whereas the area described has a very narrow road without shoulders, has many schools, bus stops, and is in need of a crosswalk, has numerous blind spots, and asphalt is compromised. Whereas BI thirty-two is a, a heavy traffic area both for pedestrians and motor vehicles, and is needed in prefer- per- improvements. Therefore, be it resolved, the Waukabomni District requests a resolution from the Ogallawasoo Tribe to direct and appropriate authorities of BI thirty-two to lower the speed limit, improve signage at the bus stops therein, flashing lights at the crosswalks therein, signage to indicate and warn of blind spots therein, create a shoulder and/or establish a walking, riding, biking, jog- jogging path in order to improve the safety of pedestrians, schoolchildren, and motor vehicle operators. Whereas the Waukdi- Waukabomni District Council met in a special meeting on the twenty-ninth day of January two thousand twenty-four, and with the quorum present, adopted the resolution. Be it further resolved, the Waukabomni District Council does hereby and adopt this resolution and forward it to the Ogallawasoo Tribe Council. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ghost Bear, second by Councilwoman Sears. Got a question over here, go ahead, Councilwoman Cardinal.
Thank you Chair. You know, I, I know Mary is listening, and this is just a suggestion. You know, that area from, um, Wade's Field, probably all the way around from G-Force, um, up to the, um, what is it called, the... Yeah, the Mormon Church? That area is really, really dark. It is. And, um, you know, just a suggestion, maybe there is some way they could put those lights through there, and, um, that would make a big difference through there as well. Thank you.
Okay. So we're gonna run the vote. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Rob- Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Eighteen unanimous, motion carried.
We got one more.
Okay.
Resolution of the Waukabomni District of the Ogallawasoo Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Waukabomni District Council requesting a resolution from the Ogallawasoo Tribe supporting establishing an alternative transportation route beginning at the Old Hospital turnoff north of Highway eighteen to number four Payabia. Whereas the Waukabomni District established by the Constitution of the Ogallawasoo Tribe is recognized as a governing body of the Ogallawasoo Tribe by Article Six of the OST Constitution. Whereas the Waukabomni District members request designation of an alternative transportation route to allow for alternative transportation such as walking, running, riding, and horseback riding to promote health, safety, and reduce carbon dioxide emissions which contribute to climate change. Whereas there is some evidence that there is a higher number of fatalities on the roads due to motor vehicles hitting pedestrians. Whereas the health and wellness of the Lakota people is a priority. Whereas the carbon diox- dioxide emissions may impact climate change and alternative transportation route may help reduce emissions. Whereas the resolution of support will aid in designating the described area as an alternative transportation route and request appropriate authorities to take the action steps to make the designation. Whereas there may be funding available for alternative transportation routes, and a resolution of support will provide the Ogallawasoo Tribe support in obtaining funding. Therefore, be it resolved that the Waukabomni District Council requests a resolution from the Ogallawasoo Tribe supporting establishing an alternative transportation route beginning at the Old Hospital turnoff north of Highway eighteen to number four Payabia. Whereas the Waukabomni District Council met in a special meeting on the twenty-ninth day of January two thousand twenty-four, and with a quorum present, adopted the resolution. Be it further resolved that the Waukabomni District Council does hereby adopt this resolution. With that, I move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Sears, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Question, go ahead, Councilman.
Are they talking about an- another road, or what, what are we talking?
They're talking about a pathway. Alternatives, so, because the roads are really narrow, there's not much of a shoulder, and, and we did have multiple accidents and things like that, so they want...
I, I, I was just curious, because it, it says that alternate, alternate road of transportation, that's a...
Like bikes, or, you know, things like that.
Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Eighteen unanimous, motion carried. Go ahead, Councilman.
Um, is Waukabomni finished?
No, we got five more.
Five more?
All right. We're finished, no, we're finished.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to yield the, uh, floor to our district sector, our district secretary. Ms. Philzepipe.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Madam Secretary, ladies and gentlemen of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council, distinguished guests and those listening on the airwaves. My name is Ellen Philzepipe, and I am currently the Secretary of the Ogallala District Executive Board. Back on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, ordinance twenty, twenty oh three, ordinance of the Ogallawasoo Tribe allowing the Ogallala District Government to assume all responsibility of Belt Village in Ogallala, South Dakota, which includes approving and terminating leases to Belt Village, and the authority to ensure Belt Village maintained the upkeep of its lots upon which their mobile homes occupy, was rescinded. We, as the Ogallala District, have never received the ordinance that reassumed authority of Belt Village. Therefore, we have been running into problems, having questions thrown at us as to how other residents in Ogallala would address issues regarding Belt Village. Yesterday and previously, we had school buses vandalized by children within the Belt Village. The same children running into the same trailer. These buses were delivering students home after school when they were shot at and had rocks and other items thrown at the buses. Windows were shattered and chipped, children... School budgets already tightened bus shortages, and now to have two buses out for these two schools. While appropriate measures are being taken to file complaints and statements to get the buses repaired, we still have the most important issue. Children were traumatized. They could have been hit, injured by flying debris or stray bullet or pellet or BB, whatever was used. While this body reassumed authority, there was no process laid out on how, how to deal with issues like these. So while this body has the authority over Belt Village, it is still us within Ogallala District that must deal with these issues. I know for one, if my grandchild was on that bus for his school, I would be upset. While we have encouraged parents and guardians to also file statements on behalf of their children and grandchildren and follow the process within the legal avenue, we still need to know as a district and as a people in Ogallala, how do we deal with the complaints, where do we send them to? What office has oversight, what department, or what individual? So if somebody here can give me that answer, or if it's within the ordinance that reassumed Belt Village, can we get a copy of it, because we have never been given a copy? A lot of these questions I would have asked back on November twentieth, but I had COVID and I was not allowed to leave my home. But still, all these months later, we're still dealing with these same issues. So if somebody can please give us a direction in which to go, in which to direct our people in Ogallala District, schools that transport our children to and from Ogallala, that must travel through Belt Village, we are asking for your help today. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Georgette. Um, the, the ordinance itself assigned um, Belt Village to the land office. So was there a process that was approved by this governing body that we can pass out to our district members to show them how to file complaints, what, what the whole process is, because we don't have those, we were never afforded those as a governing body? Having worked as a committee secretary for this body for twelve years, I do know when you propose an ordinance of any kind or resolution, not only must you attach your minutes, you must attach all documents regarding that issue. So with the passing of this ordinance, there should have been a process attached for approval also. I don't know if that's changed since my time in there.
Question?
Go, go ahead, uh, Councilman Poyer.
Yeah, the ordinance says that it, um, they'll have to get their leases through, apply it through the tribal land office, then it'll come just like any other home site lease. But as far as the process of, um, but the incident that took place... the individuals are going to have to sign or somebody's going to have to sign complaint, just like whoever did it because the district didn't have that process in the tribal land office. It's just so the process is to get a lease on it because some of the individuals that lived in it had contacted me and I said, well, go get a lease paper at tribal land so you get a valid lease. So the process that they're going to have to sign complaints on those individuals, they could name the trailer that they went into. I mean, somebody, somebody evidently is living in that trailer that they ran into.
Go ahead.
Regarding that issue with the leases, we've had the land office refer them back to our executive board saying that they need a letter of support saying that they can live in our district. So there still is no clear cut process in dealing with Belt Village. Well, then you need to speak to the land office because they're telling some individuals that and some they're telling, okay, we can approve your lease. So that that whole process regarding Belt Village is what I'm saying. You need to readdress it if if authority was given to the land office. And then land office should be giving you guys a process on how to deal with them.
We'll bring it up Monday at our land minute.
Thank you. We'll be there. Can someone else, is that one, they'll also address the other part because we do have the schools, the bus drivers, we have parents and guardians of the students.
We're we're just addressing, we we will just address the leasing situation. The law order stuff will have to go to law order. You know the process.
Oh, yes, I do, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We ready for medicine, again?
Put a limitation on. Uh, okay, so wounded knee was, we're gonna run, uh, we're gonna add that on her.
So this was the issue that was brought up from land office to ordinance to the tribal council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe imposing a building construction and home site approval moratorium for a blank mile radius from the Wondene massacre site until further action of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Now, we had around forty people show up to our meeting. And at that time, and Justin was uh, Justin Puer was also present. We asked the individuals if they had any objections, objection objections to um to um approving this and and everyone in the building was against putting a moratorium on um building and construction, constructing any new um buildings within Wondene. And they felt that it's like a it's pretty much a detrimental to our our young people in Wond- is it it's pretty much taking a a future away from our young people by not allowing our our community to develop or grow. And we do have Wondene Youth Building proposed that we want to build and and they also want a store. Every single person in that meeting asked us to um, get a store going for Wondene. Um, currently in our district, we don't have no gas station. You look up and down this whole valley, there's a lot of vehicles, but we don't have no gas station. Now, that store sitting in Allen, that was a, that was Wondene Store. And we secured the money through a bond, one administration, and then um, the next administration, they killed the project because a few individuals didn't want the store in Wondene, but I guarantee you ninety-five percent of the people in Wondene want a store. So you know, imposing this moratorium on them, it's like um killing any kind of future development for our young people and any kind of hope. And you know, right now, the community over there is running rampant with bootlegging and meth and everything else that comes with hopelessness and you know, we we really need to help our little communities like that, so. Um, my motion, Mr. Chair, since it's back on the table, would be to um to deny this resolution or this ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Little Dog. Have a second. Go ahead, Councilman.
I I just got one question then. I agree because it was referred back to the the district reps from underneath, but when we, when they go out there, Tipo goes out there and finds things. What do we do in a situation like that? That that's my question because if they don't, if they still want to go on, then we got we got maybe remains out there. What do we, what do we do? I mean, I think it's only given guidance to our Tipo office.
Well, that was discussed, you know, and and the only areas affected would be the ones where that were identified where we're going to have a problem and that's that one little um housing area behind the post office. Um, pretty much. Um, that was our our main area of concern, right, Justin? And if there's any other area where they they find anything, then we won't pursue it. Any kind of development in in any of those areas.
Yeah, that's, I just want to get that clear because I don't want somebody to say, well, we can do that with counsel, just so it's a little clarity.
Yes, yes, we we definitely need this.
Yeah.
Uh, verify that. Go ahead, fifth member.
All right, thank you, Chair. Um, so I was like, yeah, as Gar said, I was at the meeting and, you know, I I told them the proposed area where the community building, the youth building is going to be. Uh, we are going to propose, first we've got to do the archaeological NEPA clearance. Follow the process of that, but once we do start construction, we're going to have a monitor on site to watch, to watch if there's any discoveries. Because I mean, everybody knows that, or hey, as uh, we're doing, you know, like we got a resolution coming for a funding request to broaden our survey and investigation for the inadvertent remain discoveries. So, you know, I I explained to them at the community meeting that we will have monitors at at that site once the construction starts. But the um, where we're finding the the grave sites and stuff are across the road going up the hill, this is the where this site's going to be is going to be on the east side of the road. Down by that um elderly building, the ball fields.
And and see, that's the question that came up in the in the land committee, and that's why I referred to those representatives. So if it's not going to affect anything on the east side, then we need those descriptions. That but there would be no development on the west side that you guys are talking about. So the way it sounds now is the east side that won't be affected, so we need the description from the west side where those so-called graves are at.
Like like we said, said, it's only one area. We don't want any kind of moratorium on any location. Because if there's a a proposed development in any other area, that ordinance will kill it. It's just this one little area that we I we've identified where there's bones. And my understanding is that it's a, there was an old church and an old graveyard right there. But for whatever reasons, all of that was overlooked back way back when, when they passed the approval to build new homes there. We don't know why, no surveys were done. But it was done and now there's homes on that site. And if if we're going to get real technical about this, you know, we we might need to consider moving every home out of that area if you don't want to have any development because all we're doing is taking from those children over there by not allowing them to have things that everybody else does. So it's either we move the whole community or we just take it piece by piece.
Councilor Cross.
Thank you. Kila maiha. Um, you know, the with that uh grave site over there, that memorial site, a massacre site, whatever it's called now. But uh, you know, I think listening and listening to all the meetings that's been being held out there. Just recently, there was one held where it's standing rock, somewhere just recently. And the things that are going on out there, Council, I think, I mean, this is me talking, I'm a descendant, but this is me talking. Others have their own mind to make their own decisions. But I myself, I think the council, is there a possibility? I'm asking all of you, not just Garfield, I'm asking all of you. Is there a possibility for you to meet with the descendants? Get the descendants together and meet with them, see what they want. Because we are we are the descendants of those loved ones that lost their lives there. And we are the ones that's trying to do something to take care of those artifacts that are brought back. Now, those artifacts are still up in the air. Who's going to do this and who's going to do that? And those artifacts are still there, Council. So you have to look at them too. You have to look at those artifacts and take care of them first before you make any kind of decisions in that area. Because those artifacts needs to be taken care of first. So I think if there is a possibility, can this council get together with the descendants and talk to them? Is there a possibility? And I'm asking all of you, all of you, sitting here, not just one, but all of you. Because you're all in a way, you're all involved with this decision. Not just, not just one or two or three. So that's my question is, and to let you know that those artifacts are still there. Think about it, Council. Those artifacts belongs to somebody that lost their lives there. Those needs to be taken care of first before anything is decided upon. There might be, if we don't take care of those con, those artifacts now and soon, and now mitakue be council, its consequences. Think about it. Think about it, Council. I'm related to some of you. Practically, we say mitakue when we pray. That means all of us, each and every one of us, sitting here are related one way or the other. And we say mitakue oyasi. And we should look out for each other and think think and decide what we're going to do with those artifacts first. Let's take care of them first. By taking care of those artifacts, we're going to take care of our loved ones that lost their lives there. Mitakue be. I'm going to ask you again. Yuk chumpa, think. Think about it before you make any decision. I'm only I have kids, I have takojas, I love my family, my kids, my takojas. I can't afford I can't afford to lose anybody. It's too hard. We've got to think. Mitakue be, Council, think about it. Think about it. Thank you. Now, here's another one. I think he wants to say something to you. Thank you, mitakue be. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council, Chair. Yo ha napo chigus papile lampet. I want to see a lot more introduction, but I'm really bashful, so I'll keep it brief. Um, I'm coming on from the Cultural Affairs Historic Preservation Office, part of the topic on the table, yet everybody's talking about twenty nineteen, I started working at Natural Resources. Under Cultural Affairs, people would administer and manage in conjunction with the Natural Resource Director. Some of the elements that the Cultural Affairs Committee would were discuss, discuss, discussing quite a bit was finding a way to do a um survey. One of the things that was mentioned was do the ground penetrating radar without digging or um tearing into the ground where there could be a lot of remains. And so the issue come up of development that was brought to the Cultural Affairs Committee was looked at. And there's a lot of things that played that the dynamics are going to impact and could become a very disturbing activity. But I see the need for development to a degree. If it's specific to a location, so the Cultural Advisory Committee have been discussing this for a long time, time since I've been there. One of the things they recommended was to to try to do a a real good comprehensive survey of it so they can talk about it. Now, the remains that are discovered there before the former Tipo Director left were those issues at hand. And in order to fully develop, we need to know what's out there on the land. So the Cultural Affairs Committee have addressed these for a long time and and brought the issue of the idea of development that that came up also quite a few times. Was the need for developing certain things, so that was documented by that. Now, whenever an issue or an item comes up, uh, the Tipo employee would be, would activate the process for any reviews or anything like that. So when that happened, then they would take a look at what's needed. But without having all the people that are part of it, like Cheyenne River, some of their concerns are pretty important and critical to the topic at hand. And I've been informed of them also. And like the elderly mentioned here, I have a great-grandfather, no ears buried there too, so I'm a descendant of somebody up there. So but I keep it under the umbrella of my position as uh Natural Resources Director. So I think it, there needs to be like a more elaborate working session by everybody to fully discuss everything in a very uh good environment, so you don't have a lot of negative backlash and it's done respectfully and appropriately. And I think that would be a good approach to take. I know the Cultural Affairs Historic Preservation Office program, the advisors have a lot to offer, so you know, they're older, they're older people. I mean, they're older than I am and I'm I'm kind of middle-aged myself. I know we're getting up there, huh, Craig? I think he just had a birthday, so I was going to sing a birthday song for him, but I I said he's twenty. I, I said he's twenty nine, so I'll, I'll leave it there and I think that would be a good recommendation to look at. To set up a really good set, working session with everybody involved to get their input. Before it, you know, before it blows up. I shake your hand in a good way for doing the work you do. Go ahead, Darla.
What I said in the beautiful Lakota language is, first of all. There is a reason why they put the moratorium. There is a reason why relatives made that trek to Washington DC. And asked for that. There is a reason why we are trying to protect Wounded Knee. And that decision doesn't just belong to one district. That decision belongs to each and every one of you, like one of our sacred elders said. And we have to think about spiritual law. And like she told you, she gave you a warning. You have to be careful. You look at our hardships with our people, you look at the weather that's here. You look at the things that are happening here, those are eye openers, they're warnings. And there's a reason why our people say Wounded Knee is sacred. And we don't want no developments on that site. Out of respect for our ancestors who gave their lives there. And the majority of them are women and children. We cannot forget that. If you're gonna talk about development, open it up to Ochetti Shakoi. Not just the Ogallala Su tribe.
Chairman. You know, as I, I'm, I'm following uh, the elders on, on here and. Let me, let me briefly explain uh, my relationship to Wounded Knee. When uh, when I was born in Pine Ridge. My first home was the home and the lower housing in Wounded Knee. If you go by today, there's, there's a house that's vacant that blew up in seventy-three, seventy-four. That is where our house used to be. So I am from Wounded Knee. All my relatives are buried up there on top of that hill. So I got ties to the area. I, I, I'm related to a lot of them older folks, they, they know our relationship. But sitting here as the chairman and, and don't get me wrong, you know, any development's better than no development and I, I encourage that. But from sitting here listening, I do also know that only one community. Has been spoken to. I do know this has not come before the district board, executive board, or at a district meeting. Nor has it come to the Wong Kant, Yoshbay and the nine others that exist. So don't get me wrong, I, I really wanna see something happen. Mister Puyer had stated that it was supposed to come back to the district. Therefore, it did not, it just went to one community. I, I would have loved to attend the meeting. I was never notified. So, thank you.
Uh, I believe uh, Councilman Little Dog and then.
You know, once again, it's probably because it's myself presenting. But I'm doing it on behalf of a community. I was asked by the community. I was asked by the, the committee to take this back, not to the district. The district don't have no fight in this, it's a community. This has nothing to do with eighteen ninety, this has nothing to do with descendants, this has nothing to do with artifacts. Has nothing to do with all of that. We're making it that fight when it's not. You sit here and you say, the elders said they didn't want development. That's a joke, look it over there. There's a whole housing, there's a whole road, there's a church. Everything on that land over there, and to tell me there's no development, who are we fooling? There's development all over that place. Why didn't anyone stop all of that back then? Why is there a church on the killing field? Why is there homes on the killing field? Why is there a road right through there? Why is there a concrete round building right there? Where were all these people to stop all that development? Nobody stopped it. But because the, the community that's alive today, that has children. That has to invest in their children, wants something, we wanna stop it. All these descendants, they don't live in Wounded Knee. None of us live in Wounded Knee, we can't sit here and talk for that community. The district chairman knew about that meeting, he's, he asked me at the, the, the meeting before that. So what's this meeting about? And I explained to him, he knew about the meeting, but refused to show up. Just like other community members that know, they knew about that meeting. But people that showed up, they're sick of status quo over there. When there's deaths over there, they have nowhere to have funerals. That church that's on the back road, that's on the actual killing field, won't allow the people to use those buildings. That other little white church right there by the baseball field, you can't access that. That youth building, or supposedly youth building on the hill, has no water, no infrastructure, nothing, just a shell. Those kids every day over there have nothing. When there's a blizzard, they have to put their lives on the line just to go get necessities, cuz there's no store. No, no, nothing over there, no job opportunities. Every single day I hear from the community members of all the drugs, all the alcohol, all the fights, I even showed. Some of you guys videos of these guys getting beat up with bars and whatnot. But everyone wants to be a medicine woman, medicine man, and say all these things. But those people over there, they're dying. Those young people have no opportunity. And that's what we're trying to change, we're trying to give that to them. But if you guys deny that, then like I said, move the whole community out, cuz no one cares. No one cares about them, not these people that are speaking today. They're not over there every day, stopping the fights, stopping everything going on. But because it's me presenting this, they're gonna try to stop it. And that's taken from those young people. Go over there and meet with the people, not the descendants, the descendants that don't live there, go meet with the people over there, they'll tell you themselves. They want a youth building, they want a store. Don't stop them from that. Cuz every single one of us that live in our communities, we have access to all of that, they don't. The only job opportu, opportunities over there is one postal position. And their little head start, which is two or three people. That's it. And they have a whole community over there, they don't have cable TV over there. So that's all I'm saying, it's not coming from me, it's coming from the people who live there, not from people who think they do. Are dead in the seventies or the eighties, people that live there today. Thank you.
Councilman London.
I think Dave's hand was raised before mine, so go ahead, Dave, now go after Dave.
I, I just wanted to clear something up, cuz I, it. The way I understand it now, coming from the Tipo office, everything from the post office west. That's where it's, so that's the site that we don't want any development on. That's why we have to make it clear that there will be no development there. And if, if they find anything else, then so be it, then it'll stop, but the. The thing we're trying to stop is any construction going up that hill on the west side of the road. That's the point that I'm trying to get clear, cuz this, cuz if we just lift it off, that just means they could go in there and. Put up a house or whatever kind of do, we don't wanna disturb those graves that are presently there. So I'm, uh, I, I, I see everybody's point, but we're just trying to get it clear, so. What type of, cuz um, I think the housing board talked about even. Approaching HUD to even move some of them houses so that. Cuz we don't know if they disturbed any graves or not, but the point is just that area, right, we don't want any construction in there. I would think.
Go ahead, Councilman London.
Thank you, Chair. You know, um, I'm not a representative of Wounded Knee District. You know, I don't mean no disrespect by my comments, but today this issue comes to this body and it comes down to us making a decision. So I'm gonna speak on that behalf, but you know, I think that, you know, there's still. Some things that need to be ironed out, you know, I'm, I'm all for development, you know, I think we all are. But the fact is, is that there was artifacts discovered in certain areas over there. And, and we don't wanna, you know, conflict with that. You know, so I think that, you know, my recommendation, you know, if I need to make a, make a motion, I will. And that'll be to have the Tipo office set up a meeting with the Wounded Knee District. Along with the reps and the land office. To, to, to sit down and figure out this issue. Maybe Tipo office can bring a map, Mister Puyer, can bring a map of where the loco, the location is. Where the artifacts were discovered and then versus where they wanna put these structures. You know, get some descriptions out there, and I think that's the, the most uh, important thing is, you know, there's, there's a process. For everything, and we gotta follow that process, we can't be jumping a gun. So I feel like that's how it needs to go, because like I said, I'm not from Wounded Knee District. But I feel like there's still some things that need to be figured out. And you know, and out of respect, I feel like it's important to have all them inputs. From those, from the Tipo office, from the executive board, from the community, the reps. So if I need to make that motion, Chair, that's my motion, moving on.
Uh, real quick, I just wanna comment on there, you know, I did go to the, the meeting um. That it was held this weekend with uh, three tribes. The Cheyenne River, the Standing Rocks Sioux Nation and uh, the Ogallala OST. And this, this is what was on the table, was the, um, the massacre site, that was the, the, the main discussion. And it's, and it's all over um, those three reservations. Um, and what to do with not only the, the, the belongings there. But what to do in the future, how to, how, how are they gonna preserve it, the lands and things like that, those are. Uh, discussions on the table, so I think you need to involve the descendants. That's an important part, it's, it's, like I said, it's a traditional, the traditional government also has to be looked at. Because it involves um, our relatives. So that was important, and you gotta think, look at, we, we pushed this Wounded Knee bill all the way to. Congress, it's sitting right there, needs one more signature before it goes to the president. And that's also to protect the land, those, you gotta think about those things that. Uh, we all agreed on to push, and we got it up there unanimously. But we, there's one obstacle in the way, and that is from a senator. Uh, on the east coast is holding this up. So we're, we're trying to reach out and see how we can uh, work around him. To uh, to get our Wounded Knee bill passed. But, but that's also, and that bill, it does protect the land, so you gotta remember those things. So that I think this needs more discussion. Um, rather than making a, a decision, I just wanted to mention that, thank you. Okay.
Chair.
One more, one more comment and we gotta move on.
I'll make that.
Okay, one more, um, council, the, my. Question are what I'm saying, and that's the only thing I'm asking is. Yukchombe, think first before, just like the young gentleman said, you know. We need to take care of those artifacts first. Because the owners of those artifacts are laying up there. They're laying up there. We need to take care of those artifacts first, then we can go haywire, we can. Build a Walmart and Kmart, whatever, um. You know, like one, one worker at the tribal office said, if I want to, I can authorize, authorize. A Walmart to be built here, which is true. But, Midakwe be, let's take care of the artifacts first. And that's all I'm asking, after we take care of those artifacts, like the president said. Get the descendants, get the whole. Crew here, the district people, Wounded Knee District, the council, the descendants. And then after we take care of the artifacts, then we can go haywire. Maybe we can even bring a general dollar, um, we should bring a dollar tree in, whatever, you know. But let's take care of those artifacts first, for holy smokes, please. Think about it, you have loved ones, you have families, think about it. Think about it, council. And that's all I'm saying is take care, let's take care of the artifacts first. Because with them there, our loved ones are probably traditionally. The owners of those artifacts are probably up on that hill walking around, and we don't know. Thank you.
Chairman.
So we, we gotta, um, chairman, or Councilman Little Dog's motion still on the floor here, we need. We need to run it, um, so is there a second?
Can you restate that motion?
Okay, what?
The motion was made by Garfield Little Dog, and it was a motion to deny the ordinance. That imposed the moratorium on building, construction and home sites at the massacre, uh, Wounded Knee massacre site. that imposed the moratorium on building, construction and home sites at the massacre, uh, Wounded Knee massacre site.
We're, we're saying massacre site. We're not trying to build on a massacre site. That, that, that's the confusion here. They want a radius around a massacre site and that's, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to um, what it was trying to do is exclude any kind of building around the site, which put a radius and what we're saying is in Wounded Knee, we have a proposed uh, building that we want to bring. And that would exclude that if we put, and so what Davey was saying is on the west side of that area, which is a small area that we, we um, we put the moratorium and we're okay with that. But the Chairman, I asked before we, we proceed, I got a, a community member from Wounded Knee that I want to yield the floor to. I want to give the floor to Bernadette and give her a few minutes.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is um, Bernadette Hallhorn and I am from Wounded Knee community and I've lived there all my life and we are also landowners there in Wounded Knee. And in um, from the beginning, um, well, my, my father is an Oglala Sioux. My mother is a relative of Cheyenne Eagle Butte and she is a descendant of the massacre. Her um, grandfather enemies fear him, are afraid of enemy. Um, he is survived with his wife and a child, but he lost two children there. And his wife was pregnant at this time in that January, my mother's father was born. So that's how close we are of a descendant. But I never go around telling people I'm a descendant, I'm a descendant, because my father said, don't do that. Have respect. He died in a bad way. You don't go around bragging about that. I always keep it to myself, me and my siblings. And we have a lot of respect for that land sacredness. And when lower housing was going to be built, it was where that housing is behind the post office where the bones were recently found. That was back in sixty-three and my father was a community president. His name was Adolf Hallhorn. And they had a fisher factory there too, so he worked there. So they called him, he went over there and they found seven children grave. They were in grave, in coffin. They asked him, what should we do with them? So they called a minister from the Episcopal Church there. He came up and he prayed and they reburied him up there at that cemetery. So lower housing stopped that construction. They went across the highway and built it down there. So that's where the lower housing is now. And so, next thing was when um, upper housing was being built. That's an occupation happened. I was at thirteen years old at that time. And they did put the foundations of the houses down, but the occupation started, they all stopped everything. They came back after the occupation to refinish it all, but they were scared of the American Indian Movement uprising and all that. So this white construction crew built the upper housing real quick and they took off. And later on in years, we found out from the foreman of that construction, he has a, he lives in Rushville now. And he said they did find bones when they were building the little upper housing also. But they didn't tell nobody because they were scared. They just wanted to build their houses and get out of there. Nobody ever looked into that. But that foreman did tell a relative of mine that. So he asked, why, what'd you guys do with the bones then? Oh, we just reburied them alongside somewhere else. They didn't tell nobody. And so next, we, for, was it four years ago? The water broke behind that housing, the new har- they call it the newer housing. My dad calls out the Portuguese housing because there's a lot of stuff going on there. Anyway, behind the post office, that housing, they rebuild uh, the water pipe there. And I live right there on the other side of that hill. There's a gully there and I live right there. And when they did that, one summer, my kids called me up. Come here, we found our dog, our dog, my grandson's dog brought a bone back. It looks like a human skull, they said. So I ran out there and they had it in a bowl, my grandkids. And I looked at it and it looked like a human, but it was a small one, like a little baby one. So I called police officers. They came, they looked at it and they said, looks human. They called the CI, the CI said the same. They called the FBI, the FBI came. The next thing I know, the FBI had a bunch of big lights down that hill. And they were digging bones. They had some blue bags putting bones. What did they do with those bones anyway? Anyway, so that's how that happened. But I, I, I've learned the history of Wounded Knee from listening to my father and my grandpa. And um, back in um, when I was a child, we lived across the street, a creek there when Wounded Knee, that's where our land is. I come from the um, Berrygold, Blackberry, Hallhorn, Teashway, from there. And um, at that time, there was a builder Steve's bought that land from uh, Tresam Medicine. And they bought it for four hundred bucks and they went and put a store there, a museum, and a souvenir shop. And our parents never objected to that because it was a needed service there in our community. It's really hard. Sometimes when it's really bad, we all hire one truck and we get sleds and we ask families that don't have cars. We go to Pine Ridge, get their food and we put it back and we take them to their homes with on sleds. If we had a store there, we didn't have to do that. And sometimes somebody's car gives out somewhere and we have to go try to help them. But it, it's a hard life there in Wounded Knee. And right now, our kids, that's my concern. They have nowhere to go. They look around. One of them even tried to come over here to um, rent this building so they could come play volleyball or basketball. Trying to put in a request for money so they can come pay the fee, so they could come over here and play basketball or volleyball. And that shouldn't be. You go to Wounded Knee, they have nothing, so they, what do they turn to? It's everywhere alcohol and drugs and that's what they turn to. It's really a sad life there. I mean, I'm glad someone is standing up for us. They went for Garfield's, always trying to do things for our community, for our youth. And I really appreciate that. But coming from somebody that lived in Wounded Knee all their lives and also um, descendant, I just wanted you guys to know that. The history, what I've seen, what I know, I mean, I know more history, but I'll probably take your whole evening. But yeah, thank you for listening to me. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Tapio.
Yeah, um, I was gonna second his motion. I had a couple things. First of all, um, you know, there's no documents in front of us on this particular thing we're discussing. And if he motioned to, and it takes an ordinance to amend the ordinance too, right? And so if he motioned to table it, then I'll second his motion.
Okay, so.
And then, and then refer it back to.
Uh, just a second. Uh, we already have a motion on the table. Let's take, take care of that one first.
Okay, was there a second? That was my question.
No, there was no second.
I'm seconding it.
So there's, oh, so, so we got a motion by Councilman Little Dog, seconded by Councilwoman Tapio.
Oh, no, I meant Mr. London's one, sorry.
Oh, well.
I apologize. I, I mean the second motion, not the first one.
Okay, so that's, that's why I want to stop this second, um, the second motion here. So let's take care of the first. Do we have a second? It was a motion to set up a meeting. Yeah. Okay, so do, do we have a second?
If there's no second, then let's move on to the next one.
Okay, so we have a second by Councilman Dylan. Secretary, call for the vote.
What is this one?
Council, the first one.
Is there a second?
Yes, right there, Councilman Dylan.
Okay, for clarification. The motion was made by Garfield Little Dog, seconded by Craig Dillon. Motion to deny the ordinance that imposed a moratorium on building, construction and home sites at the massacre site. Because that was the title of the ordinance that was taken.
It don't have anything. And can we include my motion that we send it to um, send the discussion back to land?
Well, that's mine.
And send it, okay, and send discussion back to land.
Okay, with the amendment, send it back to land. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
This on the table motion or the other? Yes.
Howard Rooks.
And no.
Austin Watkins Senior.
No.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. Anna Halverson.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Robin Tapio.
No.
Tyler London.
No.
David Poyer. Don Roy Gospair.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, no.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yeah.
John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Eighteen, or sorry, eight yes, nine no, one abstained, motion failed. Okay, so Councilman London, can you?
Okay, I repeat my motion.
Motion.
So my re- my motion is to refer it to land committee along with the Tippel Office, the Wounded Knee District, along with the reps, the land office, the cultural affairs and the Wounded Knee descendants to figure out this issue.
Okay.
And, and to have the, I don't know how long this is gonna be, but this motion, but that'll be my, my motion there.
To send it back and set up a meeting, special meeting.
So, so just a, just a quick uh, uh, update here with the descendants there. Uh, this, this past weekend was in Chey- or uh, Standing Rock with the descendants. Now, uh, because of the, the, the ongoing issue of what to do with the items, um, they're meeting, they're, the, the, the tribal chairman um, are bringing the descendants together um, to represent the, their tribes in, in this issue. So we have these people at these important meetings. So that was the only, one way of getting them to the table. Um, and, and we picked out, uh, I, I think like five, I think we did, we picked out five. Um, so the second meeting is in Cheyenne River. Now, after that, I've, um, I'm proposing that Oglala will be hosting one, their fifth member. The twenty-fourth. Okay, see, I didn't know the date, but.
Twenty-fourth of what, Justin? Okay.
Yes.
So maybe we could just set that up for then. So in that case, referring it to the Tippel Office, which is Justin Poyer to set this meeting up with the Wounded Knee uh, District, with the reps, uh, the Wounded Knee Descendants, land office for that meeting on the twenty-fourth, right? Yep, so that'll be my motion, Chair. And that's the last one, that's the last wording, guys.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman London.
Mr. Garfield is asking if it's district or community. It could be both. If that's okay, so not to be complicated, but you know what I mean.
Okay. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Not voting.
Ella Giancarlo.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler London.
Yes.
David Poyer. Don Roy Gospair.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Garfield Little Dog.
Nope.
John Steele Senior.
No.
Craig Dillon.
And yes, seven no, one not voting. Uh, motion carried. Okay, that's it for the districts. You guys want to take a break? Okay, so let's take a ten minute break.
Recording stopped.